Uh, I would ask, uh, is there anyone here in regards to, uh, the resolution commending Bailey Hoag upon the occasion of being crowned 2021-22 Rensselaer County Dairy Princess? No, nobody here? Okay. With that being said, we'll move to the next one. P. 267-21, a resolution adjourning to July 13th, 2021, Legislative Meeting in Memory of Marguerite J. Favreau, represented by Gary Favreau, and presentation by Mr. Bendet, Leverage, and Peter.
Come on down, Jimmy. So this is a resolution adjourning the July 13th Legislative Meeting in Memory of Marguerite J. Favreau. Whereas it is customary for this legislative body to pay honor and respect to persons who have had a great impact and influence in the citizens of this county during their time on this earth. We remember with deep respect and admiration the life of an individual whose singular example enriched the lives of her family, her friends, and fellow citizens. And whereas attendant to such duty and fully in accord with its longstanding tradition, it is the intent of this legislative body to express sincerest sorrow upon the death of Marguerite J. Favreau, which occurred on Saturday, the 29th of May of the year 2021. And whereas Marguerite was born in the Mount Ida area of Troy to the late Samuel and Grace Di Stefano Grinaldo, and whereas Marge was the loving wife of the late Donald E. Favreau for 25 years, and after Donald's passing, Marge was blessed to find happiness again for another 25 years with Jimmy Vincent Scorsone. And whereas Mar- Marge worked for 30 years for Bear Manning Paper Company in Green Island, and upon retiring, Marge was employed by Emma Willard School, RPI, and worked full-time for the Sideline Sports Pub, doing what she loved best: cooking. And whereas whenever she went, Marge always brought along a large sheet pan of something delicious to share. And whereas Marge enjoyed spending time at Kay's Pizza and attending the Joe, where she was cheered on the- where she cheered on the Tri-City Valley Cats baseball team, literally for every game. Marge was a member of the Women's Auxiliary at the American Legion Post in Wyonenskill, where she spent much time visiting with friends. And whereas Marge will be missed by her loving family, her son Gary, his wife Debbie, her daughter Karen Hannah and Andy Hathaway, her grandchildren Don, his wife Amy, and Kimberly Favreau, her great-grandchildren Cole, Jack, and Fitz Favreau, her nieces and nephews, William, Donna Bouchard, Angela Barret, Anne Marie Strach, Virginia, the late Dennis Ryan, Nicholas Grinaldo, her great-nephews Matthew Bouchard, Eric Ryan, and Darrell Ryan, and her great-great nephews Maxwell and Samuel Ryan. Marge was pre-deceased by her five siblings and spouses. And now therefore be it resolved that the members of this Rensselaer County Legislature adjourn this meeting, which was last month, in memory of Marguerite J. Favreau, and extend our deepest sympathy to her family, fully confident that her contributions to this committee/community will live on to serve as a legacy to all. And be it further resolved that the Clerk of the Legislature is hereby directed to transmit a copy of this. So here's a, uh, copy of these resolutions. One for you, and I'll get one for Donnie, too. And I think that, you know, without saying anything more, I think that what we can all agree on is that, uh, Marge had a life well-lived. And, you know, I think it's everybody's, you know, goal in life when they leave this earth to may have made an impact on it, and I think that she certainly has by, uh, you know, touching so many people. So you want to say a couple of words, Gary, or do you want anybody else want to come up and say anything?
I would like to, you know, thank the Legislature. Um, mom was, she would have been 93. She had season tickets at the Valley Cats. She loved Rensselaer County. She was here her whole life, uh, never moved out of Troy. This is was her home. She was very proud of the county because the county always had the backs of veterans, uh, which was something she was very proud of. She was involved with a lot of veterans groups anytime we had going on, something going on. But the Valley Cats were good enough in Joe Bruno Stadium. She loved Senator Bruno. We used to come and talk to her all the time when she was there. Just a lot of friends that she's made over the years. And one thing I said at her ceremony, and she got buried out of the, uh, Joe Bruno Stadium, which was phenomenal thing that the Valley Cats did. And, uh, but as somebody usually gets older, your friends start to diminish, and you say, "I don't have any friends anymore." They're all gone. My mother was making friends. She had more friends when she passed than she did in her whole life. And she was adding them on when other people were losing them, so, and they were all younger. So she, uh, she socialized. She hung in Rensselaer County. She loved it. This was her people, her family, her friends, and we appreciate that you guys recognized her tonight. Thank you very much.
A great tribute, uh, to an individual who, uh, obviously, I hope that in our line of work as politicians, we can continue to making friends as we do every day, you know, till we're that age, and then some. Next, we have P. 261-21, a resolution commending Unity House upon the occasion of their 15th anniversary. Uh, Representative will be Unity House, presented by Mr. Grimm, Ms. Dorn, and Fleming, Sullivan Tida, and Ms. Weaver. Great organization, Unity House.
So it is our privilege and honor tonight to present this resolution. Here with us tonight, we have the CEO of Unity House, Chris Burke, and Board Member Noreen McKee with us. Thank you for coming. And this resolution is commending Unity House upon the occasion of its 50th anniversary. And whereas, consistent with the duty of this legislative body and to acknowledge those individuals and institutions who have contributed to the vitality of Rensselaer County, we recognize with profound respect and admiration an important milestone in the history of this community. And whereas attendant to such duty and fully in accord with its longstanding traditions, it is the intent of this legislative body to convey its compliments and felicitations to Unity House on the occasion of its 50th anniversary. And whereas Unity House has a mission statement that fully explains their dedication to people in need of their help. The statement reads, "Unity House is dedicated to enhancing the quality of life for people living in poverty, adults with mental illness, victims of domestic violence, children with developmental delays in their families, people living with HIV/AIDS, and others whose needs can effectively be met by Unity House services and philosophy. Unity House provides a direct service and works towards social justice. We help individuals identify their strengths and needs, draw upon their abilities, and access community resources. We educate, collaborate with others, and advocate to influence public policy and to create awareness of the people we serve and the issues they face." And whereas, in July of 1971, a nun by the name of Mary Jane Smith and two men, Regis Obitjiski, I'm sorry, Obitjiski, and Peter Callahan, two Franciscan friars, opened the doors of a dilapidated building on 8th Street here in Troy that was to be the base of their efforts to reach out to the community. And whereas, since its inception, Unity House has grown to meet the increasing needs of those living in Rensselaer County and surrounding communities by providing crisis intervention, advocacy, information resources, encouragement, and support. In 2013, Unity House moved to its present location, a community resource center called The Front Door on 6th Avenue. Consolidating many services under one roof has allowed the greater programming that serves more people while, for the first time, offering space for the community. And whereas Unity House is a Rensselaer County-based human service agency that provides a wide range of services to meet the otherwise unmet needs of people in our community and who are hurting and struggling, Unity House embraces the view that everyone deserves equal economic, political, and social rights. They work together to open the doors of access and opportunity for everyone, particularly those in greatest need. They work to achieve social justice in our community and to create better understanding of those who we serve. And whereas Unity House is dedicated to enhancing the quality of life for the disadvantaged people as well as others whose needs can effectively be met by Unity House services and philosophy. They help individuals identify their strengths and needs, draw upon their abilities, access community resources. They educate and collaborate with others and advocate to influence public policy. This is a repeat, I'm sorry. And whereas Unity House was, has continued to work tirelessly through the COVID-19 pandemic, providing food, housing, and clothing for those in need and across the capital region through their Community Resource Program. So now, therefore be it resolved that this legislative body pause in its deliberations and most joyously commends the faculty, staff, all members of Unity House community upon the occasion of their 50th anniversary. It's very nice tonight that we had talked about, you know, the community resources earlier in housing, and now we're honoring Unity House here. It just seems that we, um, Rensselaer County have come to a point where we, you know, understand the needs of community, and we have lots of collaborations that we do with so many different organizations that continue to help people. And I think Unity House is one of those particular organizations that has been here 50 years. And it not only continues, it constantly improves what it gives to the community. And it also makes us continue to improve and give more to the community. And I'd really like to commend those that are here tonight for all the work that they do to keep this organization going. I'm very happy also to say that I knew Mary Jane Smith, and if any of you knew Mary Jane Smith, you would understand why this organization got started and why it continued. And, um, we're just lucky to have it in our community. Have any of my fellow legislators want to say anything? Nope? Chris or Noreen?
Well, I have a story, just a quick story, about how they got, how they came up with the name Unity House. I was talking to Regis Obitjiski, the sole survivor of the founders, and I said, you know, "How did you guys come up with the name?" And he said, "Well, we first suggested the name Mary Jane House." And she quickly, uh, Mary Jane quickly batted that down because she said, "Everybody's going to think we're here selling marijuana." And so, so he said, so he said, um, he said, "No." He said, "Pete and I were constantly running out to Wyonenskill to pick up furniture and clothing and donations from former residents living in Wyonenskill who, uh, lived, uh, who lived in the neighborhoods that they were serving now, North Central, Hillside, South Troy." And he said, "We've, we felt that this was, what was happening was, the two communities were coming together in unity, and so that's how they got their name." So thank you very much for recognizing the great work that Chris and the staff do, um, for, that have been doing for 50 years. Thank you.
Chris, let me real quick.
Thank you. This is really, um, all about Mary Jane. Those of you who knew her, and I know some of you did, um, her passion to make lives better for people, um, is why we've, as Peter said, why we've been here for 50 years. It's, 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 it's never-ending. We wanted to end. Mary Jane's goal when we started was to put ourselves out of business. Obviously, we'd be a lot better off as a community if Unity House wasn't needed, but unfortunately, the needs continue to be great, um, and we plan on being here as long as they are. One thing we are working on most heavily right now, because we're always attentive to needs, is, is the multitude of people who are struggling to keep up with the cost of housing, whether it be owners or renters. Um, it's a big struggle for a lot of people, and we're doing everything we can to help people be stabilized in their housing because safe housing and stable housing makes, uh, gives you a chance at, you know, living a decent life. Um, but this is all about Mary Jane, um, and I, I can feel her in my heart and in my soul, and, uh, I'm planning on retiring next year. Uh, we're the only two executive directors in our history over 50 years. She was here 20. I've been here 30 as CEO or Executive Director, so I'm looking for a very young person who can be the, there for 40 years next. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Chris. Uh, we have a few things on the agenda tonight, uh, some presentations, a local hearing, as well as, uh, our agenda items as a whole. At this particular time, the Legislature like to call itself, uh, will call itself in order, and I ask the Clerk to call a roll.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Bendet?
Here.
Mr. Burns?
Mr. Cassell?
Here.
Ms. Doran?
President.
Mr. Fiaco?
Mr. Fleming?
Here.
Mr. Grant?
President.
Mr. Grimm?
Here.
Mr. Harrington?
President.
Ms. Hoffman?
Here.
Mr. Leverage?
Here.
Mr. Pateri?
Here.
Mr. Peter?
Here.
Mr. Testman?
Here.
Ms. Sullivan Tida?
President.
Ms. Weaver?
Here.
Mr. Weissaki?
Here.
Chairman Stammel? Here. At this particular time, Chairman, our legislator Harrington?
Mr. Chairman, to move that the Legislature resign itself into a committee in the whole for the purpose of conducting a public hearing?
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. At this particular time, hearing no objections, I would hereby appoint the legislator Rob Bailey, Chair of the Legislative Committee on Planning, to conduct a public hearing. Rob, would you come up with your committee, please?
The Clerk will read the notice of the public hearing and enter the affidavits of publication into record.
Please take notice. Rensselaer County will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, August 10th, 2021, at 5:30 PM in the Legislative Chambers of the Ned E. Patterson County Office Building, 1607th Ave., Troy, New York, for the purpose of hearing public comments on Rensselaer County's community development needs and to discuss the possible submission of one or more Community Development Block Grant CDBG applications for the 2021 program year. The CDBG program is administered by the New York State Office of Community Renewal, OCR, and will make available to eligible local governments approximately $45 million for the 2021 program year for housing, economic development, public facilities, public infrastructure, and planning activities, with the principal purpose of benefiting low, moderate-income persons. The hearing will provide further information about the CDBG program and will allow for citizen participation in the development of any proposed grant applications and/or to provide technical assistance to develop alternate proposals. Comments on the CDBG program on the, or proposed projects will be received at this time. This hearing will be conducted pursuant to 24 CFR Section 570 dot 486, Subpart 1, and in compliance with the requirements of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended. The location of the hearing is accessible to persons with disabilities if special accommodations are needed. For persons with disabilities, those with hearing impairments or those in need of lingual translation should contact Linda Von der Heide at 518-270-2921 at least one week in advance of the hearing date to allow for necessary arrangements. Written comments may be submitted to Linda Von der Heide, 1607th Ave., Troy, New York, 12180, or via email at her email address, lvanderheid@rennsco.com until August 10th, 2021.
The public hear, public hearing to discuss the Community Development Block Grant CDBG application for the 2021 program year is now open. Rules of the chair are as follows. First, anyone wishing to speak at this public hearing must sign in at the table at the entrance to the Legislative Chambers. When you are called upon to speak, please move quickly to the microphone and state your name, your address for the record. Are there any questions at this time? Is there anyone wishing to speak? I have to read this four, or three times. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this proposal?
Linda.
Linda, okay.
This public hearing has been called to support the application, oops.
Name and?
Oh, name. Linda Von der Heide, Rensselaer County Principal Planner, Rensselaer County Economic Development and Planning Office. This public hearing has been called to support the application for the Community Development Block Grant Funds from the New York State Office of Community Renewal. The New York State Citizen Participation Plan for the Community Block Grant Program or CBDG program requires two public hearings, one prior to application, and one when a funded grant is primarily expended. Later this evening, you will be asked to approve another public hearing from next month for the latest homeownership program, which is nearing completion. New York's Community Development Block Grant objectives are: Support a mix of rehabilitation and conversion activities to preserve and increase affordable housing for homeowners and renters; encourage investment in communities by assisting local governments in devising and implementing economic development strategies to revitalize valuable communities and to provide economic opportunities that principally benefit low and moderate-income persons; revitalize the vibrancy of New York communities and enhance the quality of life; and develop and implement strategies that facilitate the coordination of CBDG funding with other federal, state, and other local community development resources. CBDG eligible applicants include non-entitlement villages, towns, cities, or counties, which are cities, towns, and villages with populations under 50,000, and counties with populations under 200,000. Although the city of Troy's population occasionally dips below 50,000, Troy is an entitlement city and receives a large portion of funds directly from HUD. This public hearing is in support of possible grant, of housing grant applications and economic development applications. CBDG funds can be used for housing rehabilitation, homeownership, manufactured housing replacement, well and septic replacement, and lateral connection assistance that primarily benefit low and moderate-income persons, as well as assistance for for-profit businesses to help them expand or retain employment opportunities for low and moderate-income individuals. Additionally, the CBDG funds can be used for public facilities and infrastructure that supports primarily low and moderate-income individuals and households. Low income is considered at 50% or lower of the region's median income adjusted for household size. Moderate income is considered 50 to 80% of the region's median income adjusted for household size. For example, a four-person household can make up to $4,7800 to be considered a low-income household, and up to $76,500 to be considered moderate income. Counties can apply for up to $1 million in housing funding and up to $750 in economic development funding. In 2019, the Office of Community Renewal set aside $10 million for housing. I expect that a similar amount of how, funding will be available when the 2021 housing round is opened later this year. Ineligible activities include expenses for the general conduct of government or for the operation, maintenance, and repair of public facilities that used in the general conduct of government. At this time, we are considering a septic replacement program for the Nassau Lake neighborhood, which will work in conjunction with the DEC-funded Nassau Lake Septic Replacement Program and expanded beyond the 200 feet of the lake. The program would pay for the entire replacement of septic systems in the Nassau Lake neighborhood if a household is low or moderate income. An additional, uh, a, a, and a possible additional homeownership round is also being considered. At this point, we do not have a business for an economic development application. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this proposal? Hearing none, and in as much as all persons present were given the opportunity to speak and discuss the Community Development Block Grant CDBG application for the 2021 program year, and no one else desires to speak, I declare this public hearing closed at 5:55. Thank you for your participation.
Looking for Unity House, well-deserved, and an organization that is like any other non-for-profit organization, just never stops giving, and that's much appreciated. Next, we have Resolution 262, P. 262, Resolution commending Police Chief Brian Owen for his distinguished service to the Troy Police Department. Mr. Owen, if you please come down, and, and that's also being presented by legislator Grimm, Dorn, and Fleming.
They rescheduled.
They rescheduled? Oh. I don't have that down. Well, yes, I do have it down there. I just was going to give them credit, I guess, overall. That's good. Okay. With that being said, we can move to the sign-in sheet here for, uh, public comment. I have two names down here that I think want to, wanted to speak. Is there a Vincent Scaron here? Might want to speak?
No, he came for Gary's thing.
He came for Gary's thing? Okay. And how about, uh, this, Mr. Oz Klemrock? Come on down, sir.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. Um, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Ozma Klemrock. Um, I've, for the past 10 weeks, I have had the opportunity to act as an intern with the minority office. I've been interested in politics for my entire life, and while I have been involved in activism in the past, the legislative side of politics was very foreign to me. Um, I'm so grateful to have had the opportunity to learn how things operate on the legislative side of things. Um, so it's a great experience. Um, I would like to thank, um, the minority legislators, um, Mr. Peter Grimm, Ms. Cindy Duran, Mr. Mark Fleming, Erin Sullivan Tida, um, Ms. Carol Weaver, and, um, the Legislative Minority Assistant, Ms. Internet Weber. Um, I think I said that right. It's been two months. I hope I got it right. Um, as well as, um, for all of your colleagues in the majority, thank you guys as well. Um, I don't know where I'll end up, but I am very proud to call Rensselaer County my home. Uh, and thank you all so much for this opportunity. I'm sure we'll meet, like, again somewhere down the road. As well as for all of your colleagues in the majority, thank you guys as well. I don't know where I'll end up, but I am very proud to call Rensselaer County my home. Thank you all so much for this opportunity. I'm sure we'll meet again somewhere down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Oz. Thank you. Here, give me a hand. Oz, it has nothing to do with the party lines. It all has to do with the education and the understanding of how the process works, and I hope you got something out of it. With that being said, we're out of presentations. Move to the regular business of the legislative body for today's date. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Bendet?
Here.
Mr. Burns?
Here.
Mr. Cassell?
Here.
Ms. Doran?
President.
Mr. Fiaco?
Here.
Mr. Fleming?
Here.
Mr. Grant?
Present.
Mr. Grimm?
Mr. Harrington?
Present.
Ms. Hoffman?
Here.
Mr. Leverage?
Here.
Mr. Petiri?
Here.
Mr. Peter?
Here.
Mr. Testman?
Here.
Ms. Sullivan Tita?
President.
Ms. Weaver?
Here.
Mr. Weissaki?
Here.
Chairman Stamel?
Here.
There are seventeen present and two absent.
Okay. Invocation, Mr. Grant, please.
O Lord, you have brought us safely to this place in order to best serve the people we have been chosen to represent. Thank you for your continued blessings. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance, Mr. Grimm, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We have spent over the reading of minutes of the regular reading of July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, including the citizens' verdicts.
Motion made and seconded on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Clerk, presentations, petitions.
On file.
Presentation of communications.
On file.
Reports of commissions.
On file.
Departmental reports.
On file.
Reports of standing committees.
On file.
Local laws.
There are none tonight.
No local laws. Index of resolutions. Human papers. Okay. First one we have is G two-sixty-eight twenty-one.
G two-sixty-eight twenty-one, Resolution authorizing an agreement for telehealth services and amending the two thousand and twenty-one Rensselaer County Adopted Budget, Department of Health, introduced by legislators Grant, Testman, and Weaver.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. Next is G two-sixty-nine twenty-one.
G two-sixty-nine twenty-one, Resolution amending an agreement for the USDA State Education Summer Food Program and amending the two thousand and twenty-one Rensselaer County Adopted Budget, Unified Family Services, Youth Services, introduced by legislators Harrington, Testman, and Burns.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G two-seventy twenty-one.
G two-seventy twenty-one, Resolution authorizing the purchase of license renewals for the emergency nine-one-one system, Bureau of Public Safety, introduced by legislators Testman, Grant, and Weaver.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Seventeen ayes.
G two-seventy twenty-one.
G two-seventy-one twenty-one, Resolution accepting the Safe Summer New York two thousand twenty-one funds and amending the two thousand and twenty-one Rensselaer County Adopted Budget, Unified Family Services, Youth Services, introduced by legislators Harrington, Testman, and Burns.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G two-seven-two twenty-one.
G two-seventy-two twenty-one, Resolution authorizing the purchase and installation of LifeScan system upgrade of the fingerprinting system at the Rensselaer County Correctional Facility, Office of the Rensselaer County Sheriff, introduced by legislators Testman, Grant, and Weaver.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G two-seventy-three twenty-one.
G two-seventy-three twenty-one, Resolution accepting grant funding from the New York State Department of Health for the Early Intervention Administration Grant Program, Department of Health, introduced by legislators Leverage, Grant, Weaver, Bendet, Cassell, and Doran.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G two-seventy-four twenty-one.
G two-seventy-four twenty-one, Resolution accepting grant funding from the New York State Department of Health for the Lead Poisoning Prevention Program, Department of Health, introduced by legislators Leverage, Grant, Weaver, Bendet, Cassell, and Doran.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G two-seventy-five twenty-one.
G two-seventy-five twenty-one, Resolution amending the two thousand and twenty-one Rensselaer County Adopted Budget, Department of Health, introduced by legislators Leverage, Grant, Weaver, Bendet, Cassell, and Doran.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G two-seventy-six twenty-one.
G two-seventy-six twenty-one, Resolution authorizing agreements for the transportation of children with special needs for the school year two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two and summer two thousand twenty-two, Department of Health, introduced by legislators Leverage, Grant, Weaver, Bendet, Cassell, and Doran.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G two-seventy-seven twenty-one.
G two-seventy-seven twenty-one, Resolution establishing a date for a public hearing on the Rensselaer County Home Ownership eleven Program, Bureau of Economic Development and Planning, introduced by legislators Bailey, Bendet, and Fleming.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G two-seventy-eight twenty-one.
G two-seventy-eight twenty-one, Resolution amending a contract for fuels, petroleum and petroleum blend products for the use of the Rensselaer County facilities, Hudson Valley Community College, Rensselaer County Municipalities, and School Districts, Bureau of Central Services, introduced by legislators Leverage, Grant, Weaver, Stamel, and Grimm.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G two-seventy-nine twenty-one.
G two-seventy-nine twenty-one, Resolution authorizing contracts for highway equipment rental with operator highway department, introduced by legislators Leverage, Grant, Weaver, Harrington, Bailey, and Fleming.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G two-eighty twenty-one.
G two-eighty twenty-one, Resolution authorizing contracts for heavy truck parts and repair highway department, introduced by legislators Leverage, Grant, Weaver, Harrington, Bailey, and Fleming.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G two-eighty-one twenty-one.
G two-eighty-one twenty-one, Resolution authorizing contracts for the purchase of course aggregates, highway department, introduced by legislators Leverage, Grant, Weaver, Harrington, Bailey, and Fleming.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Sixteen ayes, one abstention, Mr. Cassell.
Okay. So moved. G two-eighty-two twenty-one.
G two-eighty-two twenty-one, Resolution authorizing an agreement for substance abuse prevention, amending the two thousand and twenty-one Rensselaer County Adopted Budget, Mental Health, introduced by legislators Grant, Testman, Weaver.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sixteen ayes, one abstention, Ms. Sullivan Tita.
So moved. G two-eighty-three twenty-one.
G two-eighty-three twenty-one, Resolution authorizing the purchase of highway equipment, highway department, introduced by legislators Grant, Testman, Weaver.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G two-eighty-four twenty-one.
G two-eighty-four twenty-one, Resolution authorizing agreement with Cornell Cooperative Extension of Albany County Department of Health, introduced by legislators Leverage, Grant, Weaver, Bendet, Cassell, and Doran.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G two-eighty-five twenty-one.
G two-eighty-five twenty-one, Resolution accepting grant funding from the New York State Department of Health and amending the two thousand and twenty-one Rensselaer County Adopted Budget, Department of Health, introduced by legislators Leverage, Grant, Weaver, Bendet, Cassell, and Doran.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G two-eighty-six twenty-one.
G two-eighty-six twenty-one, Resolution authorizing contract with Questar Three, Bosse's, Rensselaer County Department of Health, introduced by legislators Leverage, Grant, Weaver, Bendet, Cassell, and Doran.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G two-eighty-seven twenty-one.
G two-eighty-seven twenty-one, Resolution authorizing the sale of real estate to the Village of Husick Falls, County Executive, introduced by Leverage, Grant, Weaver, Stamel, and Grimm. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bendet?
Yes.
Mr. Burns? He's not here. Mr. Cassell?
Yes.
Ms. Doran?
Aye.
Mr. Fiaco's not here. Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Grimm?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Aye.
Ms. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Leverage?
Yes.
Mr. Petiri?
Yes.
Mr. Peter?
Yes.
Mr. Testman?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Tita?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Weissaki?
Yes.
Chairman Stamel?
Yes.
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G two-eighty-eight twenty-one.
G two-eighty-eight twenty-one, Resolution authorizing the purchase of thermal camera and batteries and amending the two thousand and twenty-one Rensselaer County Adopted Budget, Office of the Rensselaer County Sheriff, introduced by legislators Testman, Grant, and Weaver.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G two-eighty-nine twenty-one.
G two-eighty-nine twenty-one, Resolution authorizing the purchase of a truck and amending the two thousand and twenty-one Rensselaer County Adopted Budget, Sore District Number One, introduced by legislators Harrington, Bailey, and Fleming.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G two-ninety twenty-one.
G two-ninety twenty-one, Resolution authorizing a contract amendment for liquid polymer sore district number one, introduced by legislators Harrington, Bailey, and Fleming.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G two-ninety-one twenty-five. Twenty, should be twenty-one, I'm sorry.
G two-ninety-one twenty-one, Resolution authorizing acceptance of funds from the New York State Board of Elections, Early Voting Expansion Grant Program, and amending the two thousand and twenty-one Rensselaer County Adopted Budget Board of Elections, introduced by legislators Leverage, Stamel, and Grimm.
On the question. Vote early, vote often. All in favor?
Aye.
Seventeen ayes.
Opposed? So moved. G two-ninety-two twenty-one.
G two-ninety-two twenty-one, Resolution authorizing acceptance of funds from the New York State Board of Elections, Technology Innovation Resource Tier Grant Program, and amending the two thousand and twenty-one Rensselaer County Adopted Budget Board of Elections, introduced by legislators Leverage, Stamel, and Grimm.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G two-ninety-three twenty-one.
G two-ninety-three twenty-one, Resolution authorizing the purchase of equipment highway department, introduced by legislators Harrington, Bailey, and Fleming.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G two-ninety-four twenty-one.
G two-ninety-four twenty-one, Resolution amending the contract for the transport of beneficial reuse of bio-salads and amending the two, the adopted two thousand and twenty-one Rensselaer County Adopted Budget, Sore District Number One, introduced by legislators Harrington, Bailey, and Fleming.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G two-ninety-five twenty-one.
G two-ninety-five twenty-one, Resolution amending the two thousand and twenty-one Rensselaer County Adopted Budget, General and Capital Projects Funds, introduced by legislators Harrington, Bailey, and Fleming.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G two-ninety-six twenty-one.
G two-ninety-six twenty-one, Resolution awarding Deferred Compensation Plan Administration to Nationwide Retirement Solutions and Nationwide Trust Companies, FSB, as trustee, Deferred Compensation Committee, introduced by legislators Leverage, Grimm, Weaver, Stamel.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G two-ninety-seven twenty-one.
G two-ninety-seven twenty-one, Resolution authorizing payment for construction phase services and amending the two thousand and twenty-one Rensselaer County Adopted Budget, Highway Department, County Road Fund, and Capital Projects Fund, introduced by legislators Harrington, Bailey, and Fleming.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G two-ninety-eight twenty-one.
G two-ninety-eight twenty-one, Resolution authorizing the county to enter into agreements for settlement of litigation relating to the opioid crisis, introduced by legislators Leverage, Stamel, and Grimm.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G two-ninety-nine twenty-one.
G two-ninety-nine twenty-one, Resolution on honoring the Van Nederen Farm for the, for becoming a century farm and commending the family for their contributions to Rensselaer County, introduced by legislators Peter Leverage, Bendet, and the entire legislative body.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. P three-hundred twenty-one.
P three-hundred twenty-one, Resolution recognizing officers Ed Ashley and Nick Luzey for their heroic actions, introduced by legislators Hoffman, Grant, Bailey, Fiaco, and the entire legislative body.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G three-oh-one, P three-oh-one twenty-one.
P three-oh-one twenty-one, Resolution commending Ivan and Shirley Waeger for their years of dedicated service to the residents of Rensselaer County, introduced by legislators to the residents of Rensler County, introduced by legislators Petri, Weissaki, and the entire legislative body.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. What a great family. P. 302-21.
P. 302-21, resolution commending Officer Josh Witco for renewing the K-9 unit to the East Green Bush Police Department, introduced by legislators Hoffman, Grant, Bailey, Fiaco, and the entire legislative body.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. P. 303-21.
P. 303-21, resolution recognizing September 17 through the 23rd, 2021, as United States Constitution Week in Rensler County, and remembering L. S. G. Goebbels for her dedicated dedication to the Daughters of the American Revolution, introduced by Stamel and the entire legislative body.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. P. 304-21.
P. 304-21, resolution declaring the month of September 2021 in Rensler County a month of remembrance, introduced by legislator Stamel and the entire legislative body.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. P. 305-21.
P. 305-21, resolution recognizing September 26, 2021, as National Gold Star Mother's Day, introduced by legislators Harrington, Testman, and the entire legislative body.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. P. 306-21.
P. 306-21, resolution recognizing September 2021 as National Preparedness Month, introduced by legislator Stamel and the entire legislative body.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. Next, P. 307-21.
P. 307-21, resolution recognizing August 31, 2021, as International Overdose Awareness Day, introduced by legislator Stamel, Leverage, and the entire legislative body.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. P. 308-21.
P. 308-21, resolution recognizing September 2021 as National Recovery Month in Rensler County, introduced by legislators Grant, Testman, Weaver, and the entire legislative body.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. P. 309-21.
P. 309-21, resolution recognizing the 2021 Van Rensler Award recipients, introduced by legislators Grimm, Doran, Fleming, Sullivan Tita, Weaver, and the entire legislative body.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. P. 310-21.
P. 310-21, resolution urging the United States Senate to pass the Aqua Act, introduced by legislators Grimm, Doran, Burns, Fleming, Weaver, Petri, Stamel, Testman, and Weissaki.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. P. 311-21.
P. 311-21, is the resolution calling for the resignation of New York State Governor Andrew Cuomo, and that was with, is being withdrawn?
Yeah, this particular time being that it becomes a moot resolution, I would say that we're not going to vote on this, I'm pulling it off the agenda, but I will accept comments if anybody wants to speak on this particular issue. Mr. Testman?
Mr. Chairman? You know, in regards to the in office today, you know, it's somewhat troubling. The troubling part is, is kind of, we are, we branch, we have our executive branch, our legislative branch, our judicial branch, we're guaranteed in the process, and in this country, we are presumed innocent until proven guilty by a jury of our peers. And what we've seen lately, you know, and I guess if you expand your imagination, you can see, you can start adding years, three years, four years, we see when this process has been dampened, manipulated, or fobbed over by big tech media, Hollywood politicians, where the simple accusation of something is actually taking place of a judge and a jerk. You know, you're guilty, you've been accused of something, you're guilty, now prove your innocence. That should alarm, that alarms, and it should alarm everybody in this room. And in fact, if there's anything that could destroy this country as a whole, it would mean a loss of due process to the citizens of this country. On the other hand, based on the in office, it's a great day for the state of New York.
Thank you. Mr. Testman, well said. Would anybody else like to speak on this particular resolution? Yes.
To make a statement, I think this is a disappointing day for both sides. I remember when Mr. Cuomo originally ran, and New York was coming out of another unfortunate situation with the previous governor, and there was hope that we would be able to get a governor who would uphold a higher standard in the office, who would admire us, who would work together, with very, along the way, we'd be able to vice it for us in this day, and openly disappointed on this side of what could have been, disappointed on that side for a lost opportunity, and what could have been as well. Sad day for New York, but once again, we started new, hopefully, and we'll see where we go from here. So, I don't take any pleasure or any relief in what happened, it's a sad reflection on the New York state as a whole, and a pain in the reflection on the New York state at the highest level of government, we seem to attract people to those offices that aren't fit, and hopefully that changes.
Thank you, Mr. Peter, and I agree with both your comments, and that, I hope that we could put that behind us as a state and counties here in local government, and move forward now, and look for, learn from our lessons of the past, and move forward, and make government something to be proud of, rather than be ashamed of. Anybody else want to speak on anything? With that being said, we'll move to the next resolution. Yes?
For the record, if anyone does have objection to this matter being marked as moot and withdrawn, please raise it at this time. During none, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Secretary, make a note. Okay, next we got P. 312-21.
P. 312-21, resolution commending Congressman Paul D. Tonka as the humane horseman of the year by the Humane Society of the United States, introduced by legislators Grimm, Doran, Burns, Fleming, Sullivan Tita, and Weaver, and Stamel.
On the question? I don't want to hear anything like "right into the sunset" or nothing like that. Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. Thank you. P. 313.
P. 313-21, resolution adjourning the Rensler County Legislative Meeting honoring the life of L. S. G. Goebbels, introduced by Chairman Stamel and the entire legislative body.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G. 315-21.
G. P. 314.
Yes, right, P. 14.
Twenty-one, resolution commencing review period for agricultural district number one, Berlin, Huzick, Nassau, Petersburg, and Steventown, introduced by Chairman Stamel.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. Now we'll go to G. 315-21.
G. 315-21, resolution authorizing contract award for the Rensler County Fire Training Tower Complex, general construction, Bureau of Central Services, introduced by Chairman Stamel.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seventeen ayes.
So moved. G. 316-21.
G. 316-21, resolution authorizing contract award for the Rensler County Fire Training Complex Mechanical Bureau of Central Services, introduced by Chairman Stamel.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Seventeen ayes.
G. 317-21.
G. 317-21, resolution authorizing contract award for the Rensler County Fire Training Complex Plumbing Bureau of Central Services, introduced by Chairman Stamel.
On the question?[1330.26]